Okay, I think we're in process. Good evening, everyone. And then call us back to order. It is 6:30. The town of Smithers acknowledges the Gitum Dan clan and the Woodsoerton people on whose unceded traditional territory we live, work, and play. The public is notified, the meeting is being recorded in webcast, notice of which is on the bulletin board outside these chambers. Counsel, there's an agenda including a supplemental motion to approve, please. Councilor Buchanan, Counselor Ray, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. We have neither anyone in the gallery for the public comments nor a public hearing. So we're up two minutes and we have item 8.1, the minutes from November 26 to approve, please. Counselor Raven, Counselor Elliott, questions, comments, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. Committee of the whole November 20th for approval, please. Counselor Buchanan, Counselor Raven. There is no omissions. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. And finally, committee, the whole December 2nd. So let's just look to Mr. Schroeder in case I'm getting this wrong. We'll move adoption first, then deal with the motion.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, good. Motion to adopt, please. Counselor Raven, Counselor Ray, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, let's go to that motion. Counselor Ray?
I'll move that we bring 19-1 forward at this time.
Okay, sorry about missing that just a second or now that we're doing that. Counselor Raven, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. So 19-1 was the supplemental. You grab it. Okay, so we have the motion. From Counselor Patterson, would someone like to put that on the table? Counselor Ray, and a second or Counselor Raven? Was that a second? Okay.
Just to be clear that we're moving, that we're directing staff to provide a report to counsel of the January 14 regular meeting.
That's the motion I have as well. Any discussion? All in favor? And opposed, and that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And finally, 8-4. Special open on December 2nd for adoption, please. Counselor Raven, Counselor Ray, discussion? All in favor? Opposed, and that's carried unanimously. Okay, we have nothing under nine items to release or business arising. So we are at council reports. Counselor Buchanan.
Nothing to report, Mayor Adle. We've primarily been attending meetings lately. Yeah. So I would be talking about the same meetings everybody else has been at.
Thanks, Counselor Buchanan. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just turn on my mic so everyone can hear me. Just, you can see the attached library report for November. Seventy years of public library services in Smithers. Is marked this year, which is a pretty momentous occasion. Seven years is a long time, so appreciate the work the library does. And on the back part of the report is a picture of me and Linda McDougall. Presenting the town of Smithers mug to her on her retirement, and I'm just thankful that Linda has such a great career at the library and she's carrying on with her volunteering ways. And there's probably no little kids listening, but I will be joining the library next Friday evening as a visitor from the North Pole. So that'd be a fun time to do that every year for last since I've been on council. So it's very good. And then joining the town public skate on Sunday, the 22nd, I believe, as well. So this is our last meeting before Christmas. So I just wanted to throw that in there so everyone can come down and get some candy from Santa.
Thanks, Counselor Elliott. Thanks for taking note as well of Linda. That really is lovely, and thank you for doing that. Counselor Leonard has regrets, and Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor Adle. Before I get to the notice of motion, just to mention that on November 13th to 14th, I went to Quigley today territory, or it's known as Prince George, and attended the NCLGA Mental Health and Addiction Symposium. I won't repeat a lot of the lessons that I learned in that particular symposium, just because a lot of what was echoed at that particular symposium was very similar, if not exactly the same, to the information that was shared at the Provincial Community Safety and Wellbeing Conference in Victoria, just with the heavy emphasis of just recognizing that north areas are disproportionately affected than most of the province. And it was a pleasure to sign on as this council had voted while her worship was a way to sign on to the 2024 Mental Health and Addictions Accord. So that will likely come to her worship's desk, and it was just really incredible to see just the number of signatories that also signed on. I will just note that 11.4 Part 1 is a notice of motion, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Counselor Ray?
Sorry, I was just wondering if you could be a little more specific as to which concerns those are.
Sorry, Counselor Ray. I see Counselor Patterson's face too, but are you referring to the verbal report, the notice of motion?
Yeah, sorry, the notice of motion. My apologies and my apologies for not going through the chair.
Okay. And Counselor Patterson, I'll give it to you in a second, but I, are you, it's the letter, right? Those are the concerns that are addressed in the letter? Okay, Counselor Patterson?
So this was just a conversation that I had.
Okay, I think we're clear now. Any other questions, Counselor Raven?
So how is this request different than Roadstar Plus?
And then I'm just going to get a bit of clarity before we go too far down this road. Because this is notice of motion, so Mr. Schroeder can help me. Any sort of debate on the motion will come at the next meeting. If there's things by way of background, I guess, that we wanted to tip Counselor Patterson, or we could do it that way, but maybe Mr. Schroeder, because we don't deal with that many of them. Maybe just give us a little clarity on a clean handling with a notice of motion.
Certainly, the notice of motion procedure is largely to introduce at the first meeting and debate and discuss and move into some of those more specific items at a, at a future meeting. Certainly, there's no restrictions on discussion or debate at the initial meeting, though I think the town's practice has historically been to save those, those broader discussions for, for the meeting in which the notice of motion is introduced for, for a vote.
Okay, thanks for that clarity, and I'm sorry to cut you off, Counselor Raven. I just wanted to make sure we all understood. So with that preamble, if there's questions that you wanted to share with Counselor Patterson, please go ahead. Okay. A bit clunky on my part, so wasn't meant to cut it off just to make sure that we all have the same understanding, because notice of motion are fairly rare for us. Counselor Buchanan, is that your hand up or no?
I was going to say something, but after Mr. Schroeder spoke, it sounds like we should be doing it at the next meeting, not this one.
Well, I think a part of what he said is there's nothing that precludes it. So I guess if we're, there's one, I'm going to say one more thing. I see all kinds of hands. Council does have the opportunity, if it chooses to move it on to the table right now, that requires a two-thirds vote. So if council wants to discuss it and debate it right now, I'll look for that sort of emotion, and if it's other questions of clarity, we'll deal with them now. So I'm going to go back to Counselor Buchanan, I see Counselor.
Sorry, I'm going to recuse myself. It's going to, one of, one of the CCs is the deputy minister in charge of the distribution branch.
Okay, we'll just give Counselor Ray a moment. Counselor Buchanan?
Yeah, I guess my only area of concern with writing a letter of this nature is this is a reality for so many people who live in this area. Like, I know people who've gone a year and a half without having their car fixed. So there's something that makes me uncomfortable about writing a letter on behalf of two people when this is really the reality for hundreds of people. So that, that's my main area of discomfort with a letter like this.
Thanks, Counselor Buchanan. Okay, Counselor Raven?
Well, it, it's just because there is a process through ICBC with roadside plus where you actually do get rental vehicle, which would cover in case of vehicle or animal strikes. So that's why I guess my question of clarity is just about, would this be over and above that existing program? And that was just where I was a bit confused.
Okay. All right, mic on. So with that, we'll leave it and you know, invite people if they have questions of clarity, just to collect them, and we'll deal with them at the January 14th meeting. Okay, so I'm going to hold there. Okay, Counselor Patterson, you had a?
Thank you, worship. I appreciate the comments that came from my fellow counselors. Just a quick question through just staff. Hearing that this is a shared concern of many people within our area, is it possible for me to make a revision to the notice of motion to make it more broad, or is, does it have to stay as it stands now that that's been made?
Mr. Schroeder?
So the, the notice of motion would stand as is at the, the next meeting. If there were potential amendments that a member was considering, those could be made at the January 14 meeting or the meeting in which the notice was introduced for debate and discussion.
Alrighty. Good learning for all of us. Maybe we'll just invite Counselor Ray back and we'll move on. And just for your information, the notice of motion stands for the next meeting. Counselor Patterson, anything else from you?
Thank you, worship. Just to say that I will likely be looking to then create another notice of motion in the new year, just based on some of the feedback that I received. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Raven?
On November the 28th, I had a health committee meeting, and we had Jody from the Northern Brain Injury Association there. So that is a free service available to all residents for anyone that has suffered or that, that has experienced any type of brain injury, which could be stroke, anoxia, choking, surgery, and also trauma to the head. It's an underutilized service, but Jody has actually grown it quite a bit, and, but she's still always looking for more people. And even if you're not sure if you qualify, she invites anyone to just stop by and have a chat. She mentioned that she, she has helped several people significantly improve their lives, or they didn't even realize that it actually was from a brain injury. So just, it's a great piece to get out there. The other cool piece from the health committee meeting is that the Bokley Valley District Hospital celebrated being fully staffed in our maternity and ER. So we have permanent staff, so that is absolutely fantastic news. And yeah, everyone on the health committee is doing quite well, and there's a lot going on in Smithers. On December the 3rd, I attended local government contract management committee meeting virtually. And then on December 4th, there was Carol Fest at Smithers Secondary School, which is a fantastic way to kick off the season. And then I also did have the opportunity to sit on a panel at Bokley Valley Christian School where the students presented some ideas for projects on indigenous reconciliation through truth telling, and that was a really, really fantastic afternoon. We actually ran over, because it was, there was just so many neat projects, and I know I for one kept asking questions, and it's just really neat to see the next generation of learning so much so early and then taking that forward. That was really fantastic. And then on December the 5th, the Bokley Valley Research Center, they switched, they are now over across from oh my goodness, gentlemen's spa. So they actually bought the property, so they don't have to worry about renting anymore. So they have a secure space. It's much larger, and they'll actually be able to accommodate their work, where before they were doubled up or even tripled up in their offices at some points. So they have a permanent location, which is fantastic. And then there was the Ugly Sweater Party with the BV Women Who Care, and Mary Adle was also in attendance with that. Seventy-one women raised $7,100 for local initiatives and families. So that was a really good night.
Thanks, Counselor Raven. Counselor Ray?
Nothing to your worries.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. My report is there, so if there's questions, I can take them, and otherwise we'll move on. Okay. And we're up to staff reports then. First report from Ms. Smith, this is 14-1, regarding the Skena Roundtable Liaison, and we have a recommendation. If there's anyone else who was interested in being named, recognizing that when Ms. Larstone was here, she said that the invitation can be shared with anyone, and I think that's the intention. So I'll just leave it for there and then otherwise look for a motion supporting the recommendation. Counselor Raven moves. Is there a second or Counselor Elliott? I guess I'll just ask, I'm assuming the staff have been consulted, and I think Counselor Patterson expressed interest, but before we actually put people on things, I'll just confirm that. Okay, okay. All in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Thanks, Ms. Smith, for that. And then we'll just look to Mr. Durham, Ms. Bearman, when the invitation comes, just to send that out so that if other folks are available, they have the opportunity. Okay, thank you. 14-2, report from Ms. Bearman on the airport regional funding needs. So there is a recommendation. I'll just, I'll ask if there's any questions of clarity first. Okay, anything from staff that you wanted to add before we go to this? Okay. Counsel? Anyone want to put the recommendations on the table? Counselor Raven? Counselor Elliott? Discussion, Counselor Ray?
Um, it, it, I, this isn't meant to be a criticism, but, and now, of course, I can't find it. But it was just that we've been using a lot of the airport operating surplus to pay for the capital borrowing costs. Actually, that is technically true, but what happened was we in, we increased the airport improvement fee to cover the payments, but it goes into the operating and it comes back out again, if that's correct. And I just want to make sure that that the regional district doesn't think that they're having to pick this up because we're paying for the building of the airport. If that makes any sense, it just might make the business case a little better if there's not that confusion, and, and Mr. Blackburn, if I'm wrong, feel free to correct me.
Okay, well, I've got Mr. Durham, Mr. Blackburn, so either or.
Yeah, what it'd say is we have been having conversations with the regional district as we've moved through this process. So I think everyone's kind of aware of the circumstances, but I'll maybe let Mr. Blackburn elaborate further.
Mr. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Adle. I don't, I don't think that there's anything, there's no hidden agenda, and the regional district is aware of how this is going forward, and we've worked with our previous finance director and now our contract finance director to come up with these numbers, so.
Alrighty, any other questions? Thanks for the explanations. All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Okay, and the report from Ms. Bearman, NDI T Grant Writing Support Program with the recommendation. If you want to put that on the floor, Counselor Raven, thank you. Second or thanks, Counselor Buchanan. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. Let me start keeping track where I am. Okay, 14-4 from Ms. Bearman. She's been typing a lot. Okay, NDI Capacity Building Grant with the recommendation. Counselor Buchanan, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Buchanan?
Oh, I was just going to say I'll move the staff recommendation.
Okay. And Counselor Patterson, second, I saw her hand go. Any questions? Counselor Ray?
I'm just a question as far as, so I could, I could see not having to have staff come back every, like, is, is, does this have to come back to us every year? Or, okay, this has to be a separate one every year. Thanks.
I'm guessing that council resolutions required.
Yeah, council resolutions required annually.
Already, all in favor? Opposed, and that's carried unanimously. Okay, report from Mr. George and Free Transit for New Year's Eve recommendation. Was that you, Counselor Patterson? Did I see your hand? And Counselor Ray seconds, discussion? Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, worship. I just want to thank staff. This is a brilliant idea to keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Patterson. All in favor? Opposed, and that's carried unanimously. Okay, a report from Mr. George, looking for recommendations for the Splash Pad Advisory Committee. And I'm just going to apologize, I meant to reach out to all of you to see what interest there was. Counselor Raven has indicated that she's willing. I'm, I've got to say I'm concerned about your work levels, because I am, so I am going to revisit that for everyone. I mean, you're demonstrating, you're expressing interest. And I actually just have a question for Counselor Buchanan, you may, Buchanan, excuse me, because you were the liaison or are the liaison for the skate park project. So I was just going to check with you on the workload that that was. And see, and then we'll look for other interests, but, uh, Counselor Buchanan?
Yeah, I mean, that, that workload was not super heavy. I think it was one meeting a month. And I would be willing to serve on this advisory committee if council chooses to support me being involved with that.
Thanks, Counselor Buchanan. Just by way of background, when I was looking at this as well, and I missed the meeting where the decision was made to move forward. But in terms of the advisory committee, and I will look to Counselor Buchanan to make, make sure I'm saying this properly. The liaison is the connective tissue between the committee and council. You're not the champion or the advocate. Is that a fair description? Okay. So I just think because this is new, I think that's what we're looking for is the info back and forth versus advocacy on behalf of. This is, you know, a project of the community, and we have the community partnership agreement. And I just think, you know, unless I have missed something in the original, that the time that it came to council, I just wanted to make sure with the liaisons that it's clear what your role is at that table. Counselor Ray?
So actually, I'm a little confused now, because this is a little, in my mind, this is a little different than all the is on. It's an actually a building committee, so the counselor should be participating, my bad. So I, I wasn't sure, you know, I think it's a little bit different than the liaison position, if, if I'm, unless I'm wrong, but.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. I'm going to go back to Counselor Buchanan, and then we can look to staff, whoever was the the connection between staff and, and the town, then, because that was my memory with the skate park, but Counselor Buchanan, perhaps you could enlighten me?
Yeah, I mean, I think I served on the skate park committee for two or three years. It was one meeting a month. I didn't always feel like it necessarily required me to be the champion of the project, because there were times where I actually voted against things, just because I was worried about capacity issues on the part of the town, even though I fully supported the project. So I would imagine, you know, it would be something similar with us, and I yeah, I think, I think the main role I played was being able just to convey information from the town to the committee at the meetings.
And just for clarity, you said that you voted on things, you're an active member. I guess my, my preamble, just related to the initiative for the project comes from the community versus from the municipality. So that was what I was thinking when I made my comments. Counselor Ray, if you had other comments after that?
Yeah, so I did forget it was a committee. I thought it was just a liaison, like some of the other ones. I, I was thinking, when I was on the advisory committee for the arena, which was ours, council had input into watching costs. It's a little bit different. I think council's input would be watching out for things that are going to cost a lot to run afterwards. So if, you know, if they want to make the whole thing cold played and can raise it, that's not council's concern. It's whether it's going to be a lot, you know, whether certain things are going to make it a lot for us to run. So that was where I was a little confused, so I apologize for that.
No, I think it's good, we might as well be clear, we don't have that many of these, so this will be our second. Yeah, it's going to be our second one. So we, this was all created around the skate park. This is project two, so it's not like we have a ton of history. And between Mr. George, who's this, this report comes from, but I think Mr. Allen probably has the longest memory. If there's any other things that we ought to be considering at this time, this seems like a good time for council to know. If there's not, there's not, that's fine. Or Mr. Durham?
I was just going to say, so at this point in time, the committee does not have a terms of reference or anything. And so that's one that we're going to be looking at the organization, the Smithers Splash Pad Society, to develop that terms of reference and figure out how they're going to be moving forward. So the emphasis is really going to be for them to figure out that path forward. And that's where we thought there was plenty of opportunity to appoint a council liaison at this point in time, just so that they can provide some considerations as they move through that process. So certainly, this is one that, you know, is not council-led, I guess we'll say, but we're going to be looking at the group to yeah, kind of carry the project and have that council liaison to support.
Thanks, Mr. Durham. Mr. George?
Thank you, your worship. Just referencing the community partnership agreement here. So town council may choose to establish a project advisory committee to help guide the project's planning and implementation. This includes a mix of council members and community members and supported by town staff. We, we do have two right now, but I will note to council that now that the Parks and Recreation Plan has been approved, there's lots of groups that are waiting in the wings to, to come forward to utilize the community partnership policy there. So council should expect to see a few more of these in 2025. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. George. It's, um, again, a question of curiosity. So this recommended two, and we did the skate park with one. Was there any? Is there any particular reason for two versus one? Just because?
Maybe Mr. Allen can comment for the skate park of how many council was involved or the process for two versus one. But we looked at a similar model to bring this forward as to what was brought forward for the skate park. It's council's discretion for two versus one.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Adle. And, and also, I'm more familiar with the Chandler Perk Field Advisory Committee from 2015-ish, and that had two council members assigned to that committee, but it, it does depend on the terms of reference that are established for the committee or the task force to abide by the policy.
Okay, so that's good information. I'll just finish the, go to you, Counselor Patterson. I think for now, I'm happy with what's in front of us. We've got two people interested in being in there. And then I see Counselor Patterson and Mr. Schroeder, and I think it would be really smart for people to come back to council. If we feel like our resources are being overextended and one person's adequate, we could do one and an alternate or something. But I think time is valuable, and so if two people are the right number, that's fine. And if one is the right number, we'll rely on you two plus staff to bring it back. Okay, Mr. Schroeder first and Counselor Patterson?
Thank you. Briefly, to sort of look at the intention of the policy and sort of what context the project advisory committee would be set up in. This is a step prior to a detailed project proposal being submitted and final approval being issued by council. I believe broadly, the intention is a way to support the proponents to ensuring that a final project proposal I believe broadly, the intention is a way to support the proponents to ensuring that a final project proposal and. Submitted to council for, for a final approval and implementation would be agreeable and, and ensuring that we're, we're certainly not accept, over accepting our resources. So largely, the, the discussion that has occurred, you know, that, that council has had. From a, from, from the perspective of our procedure bylaw. This isn't necessarily a type of committee that's considered. So certainly something that we could look to our procedure bylaw as a, as a potential update to better define the roles. Of both council, the proponent, and also what these types of committees do and. Just create a bit of better governance structure for these items.
Thanks, Mr. Schroder. I think that's great. Council Patterson.
I think you're actual, so I am in support of this particular advisory committee. Recognizing that that doesn't specify the names, but I will just say, or reiterate some of my initial concerns, predominantly with. A consideration for our climate action plan. You know, this year I grow all my own food in the summer, or not all of my own food, but predominantly. And I lost a lot of my crop that I worked really hard on due to the water restrictions that we had, and I just, it's not lost upon me that. We just don't know what the future looks like. So for me, I don't know if it's possible, but I would like to see where it says legislation or policy considerations. Where it talks about in alignment with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, where I recognize that is now been adopted. I would still like to see also consideration to our climate action plan. And then there's a statement here under resource considerations where it says that they're, at this time, they're not requesting financial contributions from the town. But I'd be really interested in what the cost of the maintenance would be. And the third is just based on a comment that Mr. George just made around. The number of people within our community who want to see us establish committees. And maybe a question through to Mr. Doer, at what time would we see that list? And maybe have a conversation as council as to what the priorities may or may not be. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna break some of that up. So. I'm gonna go back to your comments on the committee and other concerns. I actually share some of your concerns, but council's made the decision to move forward on this one. So I think we, we have to keep live to the concerns that we have and look to the proposals as they come back from staff and the committee. Recognizing the water concerns, et cetera, but council's made the decision to go ahead. So that's what's happening. Staff are acting on that. In terms of, I'll, I'll look to Mr. Doer, but in terms of your second question on committees. I'm gonna suggest that doesn't live at this particular discussion, but I'll give Mr. Doer an opportunity and then I'll invite you. To bring that back a different way, and I'm intending to as well, but I don't think it lives attached to the splash pad. Mr. Doer.
Yeah, certainly, I'll let Mr. George correct me if I'm wrong, but I think just with that transition. Other groups are looking at bringing forward potential projects, and so it'd be a matter of them bringing it at whatever point they do. Do you have any further thoughts, Mr. George?
Yeah, through to your worship. We, we have three groups that have been working closely with the town that are in the initial stage of this. So we've, we've provided them with the, with the community partnership agreement. And then when they're ready, they'll, we'll be bringing this forward to the town, but we don't have a, a list of the, the timelines or anything like that.
Thanks for that. Council Patterson, were you referring to more projects like this or committees in general? I might have misunderstood you.
So. I just heard that there was a number of other potentially interested groups, so I was just saying. Like while I also recall that I'm in support of this, it just makes me think about, it's not just council's capacity, but it's also towns, town staff capacity. So I was just thinking, obviously, this group is prepared. So I just wanna be cognizant of the fact that there's more coming, and at what point would we have that conversation, just so that staff feel that we're thinking about it, I guess is my point. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that clarity. I misunderstood what you had said, so we're good. Mr. Doer, go ahead.
Yeah, basically, whenever those groups are ready to present to council and ask for a similar circumstance.
Okay, Council Ray.
Well, I'm just specific to the motion, and since we have two interested, maybe the future ones don't need to, but I think. If we know we do have people in the waiting, I think because the nature of maybe like the Chandler Park and then the skate park. And then the one that I was on have been different. If we can get two counselors on there, kind of. Can almost go over what works, what doesn't, then there's two counselors that can inform the process later on. Because we're gonna have to build capacity as a council. To be able to sit on these committees and, and hopefully it won't always be people that are going in, kind of not really too sure what their role is.
Thanks, Council Ray. I think. You know, each of these will move forward as well with council support. So at some point, if we don't think we have the capacity in the organization. We slow things down in the queue. That's never a happy moment, but that's actually the option, is if we can't actually deal with them as they come up. We just slow them down in the queue. That's the sad decision-making point. Okay. I think. Do we vote on this? No. Council Patterson.
Your worship, you made a comment around how you wanted to think about one particular member ahead of time. Did you, do you wish to have those names inserted right now, or would you like to wait?
No, um, no, I think we've got, the recommendation was for two. We have two volunteers willing to do it. I think. We're good for now, and I'll look to those folks to come back if they think. You know what, one's fine, or whatever changes, and then if we have extra demand. I think that's the time when we might have to revisit all of council's capacity and say, we're gonna reject things if, if I'm answering your question.
I was just gonna make the motion, if that's okay.
I think it's on the floor.
Okay, perfect.
Is it? No, it's not.
No.
It's not, Council Patterson, thank you.
So, Miss Shana or Miss Mindel, I'm just gonna go start with the, and that to add the, the members' names. So, and that the members be Counselor Sam Raven and Counselor John Buca. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson, and a second or please. I want someone else up there than you. Council Ray, thank you. Just cause it's your name. Okay. Any further discussion? Sorry for that inelegant way of getting there. Thanks, everyone, for the conversation. All in favor. I think that's carried. Ms. McKinley, what did I miss?
That's actually right.
I think what Council Patterson said is that she was just moving the entire motion and then speaking to the bracket. Which was inserting the names of Counselor Raven and Counselor Buca. That's correct. Council Patterson?
Yes, Ms. McKinley, thank you.
Okay. We're all good? Already. Let's see how we do with the next one. We've got fourteen seven, a report from Ms. Chandran with a recommendation. Regarding the B C Vision Zero and Road Safety Grant Program. Anything additional from staff? Okay, council, what's your pleasure? There's a recommendation. Council Raven moves, sir, a second or? Council Buca seconds, discussion. Council Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor Atwell. So question through to staff. I just noticed here that it says. In the first sentence, after the safety grant program, popularly known as the Vision Zero Grant Program provides up to twenty thousand dollars to local. Slash indigenous governments. My only question would be, would it be possible to reach out to the Office of the Witsawton? To see if there'd be opportunity to apply for the twenty instead of the forty. But then I realized that it had actually already been applied to, and this was sort of just an afterthought. So this is just a comment moving forward for when this opportunity might come again, just to see how we can maximize the potential opportunity for funding. Just to say that we potentially might do the heavy lifting by doing the application itself, recognizing that all members within our community would benefit. So just a, a comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson. Any other comments, Council Ray?
I'm just a question. Through to staff, I'm assuming that if we have bicycling speed limits, will those be enforced by the RCMP? Or how does that work?
I don't know. Mr. Allen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Atwell. I'll give that a shot. Basically, RCMP will. Uh, enforce anything on the roadway itself, including bicycle lanes. On the, I, I think, Council Ray, you're referring to the multi-use pathways where we propose to have cyclists with pedestrians. Such as the Princess Street design, either or. Okay. We don't intend to. Put speed limits on the multi-use pathways or the sidewalks, and those are. Regulated by the, by town and our community safety officers, not RCMP in that case.
Council Ray.
So in that case, aren't we incentivizing, say, on Princess Street? E-bikes to move off of the bike lanes and onto the. Sidewalks then?
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, I, but e-bikes are still going through some growing pains, I, I would say. And it's something we can look at amending our bylaws exactly to. Exclude e-bikes from the multi-use pathways, and then they would follow the same rules on, of the road.
All good? Council Elliot.
I don't know if I'm gonna cloud the water with this question or not. I don't know if you were maybe referring to like back alleys. I know in the report, there were some. Streets that have only alley access to homes with those. I think in the report, it said maybe put size, speed limits on those. Am I wrong in that assumption? And then would the police be able to enforce those?
Mr. Allen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Atwell, to Council Elliot. Yes, that's exactly right. You're not wrong. We do plan to. Target the lanes that are currently acting as principal access for residents. They, they currently do not have direct road access. And principal access is defined as a six-meter-wide road, whereas our lanes are all four point nine meters or sixteen feet. They're not the, the twenty-foot standard, so that's, and as, as we see increased activity. In the lanes with additional carriage houses being, being constructed in, in the rear yards with lane access. That's one of the main drivers for bringing this forward and applying for this program. It's, it's to try to, yes, to just answer the last part of your question, the, once the speed limit is assigned even to a lane. Then RCMP can enforce the speed.
Council Elliot.
One more question to that. Currently, is there a speed limit on lanes or alleys that is enforceable? Can you just go as fast as you want down a back alley? I see in my neighborhood, that happens quite a bit.
Mr. Allen.
The, the current speed limit for all roadways in the town is currently fifty kilometers an hour. But the municipality has the ability to, by bylaw, amending the traffic bylaw to reduce the speed limit. And we have on Third Avenue as the cycling spine, the east-west cycling spine. It's, it was a pilot project in two thousand fourteen, and the speed limit on the entire length of Third Avenue is thirty kilometers an hour. And that was, that can only be done by a bylaw, and then you have to post regulatory signage. In order for RCMP to enforce it.
Okay. I, I can't help myself. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I, I've just. I'm wondering, and it seems facetious, and I don't mean it to be that way. Is there a real problem here on the lanes that we're gonna solve, or is this part of a future education? Like, it just seems, equipment, there's a reference in here about equipment, similar equipment failing in the past. It's going to, you know, even if it's all paid for, it's going to take staff time, and we have trouble having enforcement. Vehicles on our roadways in terms of traffic tickets. Like, is, what are we gonna solve with this? I guess that's the question I can't stop asking. Mr. Allen, if Ms. Chandran's not here.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Atwell. Yeah, I, I worked with Ms. Chandran on this report and the application. If you're referring to the speed board, the, the trailer-mounted speedboard. That is more for educational purposes, traffic, you know, it's a traffic calming technique or a tool. But ultimately, the RCMP will be making the, or enforcing the speed limits. So it's more, yeah, it's more on the public safety side of things, and we, we are, actually have. Received a, a number of complaints about excessive speed in lanes, so that was another. You know, a lot of our bylaw enforcement and amendments are based on complaints and. This has been, it, it has been and will be an ongoing issue for, you know, in. We don't see it in the foreseeable future where these. Lanes were, that are identified will become, or be replaced with. Legal road access, so this is one way of, of just compensating for that, I guess.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Okay, anything else? Council Patterson, and then Council Elliot.
Thank you, worship. I just wanna say, I appreciate, I appreciated your comment. And one of the oldest emails I had in my inbox was from a delegate we had over two years ago. From ICBC offering to engage with council on ways in which we can make our roads safer. And, and at first I thought, oh, you know, it feels pretty safe, but I would just say, having moved right into the downtown heart of our community. It's astounding to me, every single day, what I witness, children almost being hit every day. Every single time I'm parked at a red light, the amount of cars that I see blow red lights, huge industrial vehicles blowing red lights. It, I, I've just given up because I feel like no matter what I bring back to this table, it just seems totally overwhelming. So this was just brilliant timing. So please thank Ms. Chandran for putting this forward, because I would just say, as a new mom. I will not be letting my son walk anywhere in this community alone, ever. It's ruthless. And I just wanna thank our community safety officers and RCMP, because I recognize how incredibly busy you are. And I was actually really excited to see how many complaints were made, because I thought it was losing my mind. I thought it was just me. I sound like a broken record at this table. So I appreciate that, even if there's a small element of educational component, that makes me happy that we're maybe turning the dial just a tiny bit further. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Council Patterson, Council Elliot.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. Can this money be used for line painting, for bike lanes, besides any, whatever's in this report?
Thank you, Mayor Atwell. Not in this current project that was applied for under the grant program. It has to be a specific project. If we, I'm not sure if it could cover. More operational costs such as line painting, which has to happen annually. Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, thanks, folks. The recommendation is on the table. Are you ready? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried unanimously. Thanks, everyone. Okay. Okay, the fifteens, we've got municipal markers for a couple of months. Any questions to staff? From those, Council Buca.
Um, not a question, Mayor Atwell, but. I know it's extra work for staff, but I just wanna say I really appreciate receiving the municipal markers and find them really interesting reading every month. So I just wanted to say that publicly.
Thanks, Council Buca. Anyone else? Council Elliot?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out the public engagement. Social media pages. You can see there's optics to me and the engagement of the community and social media. So that's really encouraging to see from our communications position, and she's doing a great job, I think. I had a question for Mr. Blackburn, who's the chair, about, I think with some of them. Oh, maybe I'm not right. Airport numbers, was that in this report? I was curious just about private planes coming to the airport. Where would that be captured in that, those numbers? I know we have still had people coming in in the fall, and I know, just wondering where we capture those numbers.
Mr. Blackburn.
Through the chair to Counselor Elliot. So the passengers on those aircraft are not captured. The movement of the aircraft is captured, so it's, it's considered an aircraft movement that is recorded in all the movements that are shown in our markers. But not the passengers.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Blackburn, go ahead.
And if I could just follow that up, the, the reason we don't is because we have no idea. Sometimes they come in at late at night and they could have ten people, they could have two. We have no idea.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks for the work on those reports. Appreciate it. Already, for information, we have the. Report for Mr. Chad, who is here at the table. So if there's any questions on his report, he is here and could answer. If you have them. Council Patterson.
Thank you, worship. Any opportunity to talk about traffic? I just wanted to ask you, actually, how does that relationship? Um, I just wanted to ask you, actually, how does that relationship work with the RCMP, and how are you finding, um, that that goes? 'Cause I think, you know, her worship raised a good point when we talk about capacity. I'm just curious, um, do you take that all on, or if you could just expand a little bit for me, that'd be great.
Mr. Chad.
Yeah, thanks, Mary. Yeah, it's, it's a joint thing. Uh, we work together with the RCMP quite a lot, obviously, with the more vulnerable and stuff and other projects, so when we, when we're dealing with, like, the traffic, so to get the stats for the last report that we were talking about there, like, I went and worked with the with the detachment and got the stats for her, so she can have those. There's a certain limited amount of minor traffic I can do in downtown, or like parking and, and small things like that. There, there is, uh, gonna be something in the future, which I don't wanna talk about yet, coming, that's gonna give us a little bit more abilities, but, um, yeah, we work, like, if, if I see something, I have a direct line to the detachment, a backline, I can call. So I can, you know, try and cut the time down where we can get to them, but even the numbers I gave are probably grossly understated of how many calls they get for, for driving issues. Um, it is a capacity issue. They just don't have time to be on, and the Highway Patrol only does the highway corridor. They don't go to the side streets or anything. So there, there's definitely an opportunity to do something there. It's just how it's gonna look is the question. Hope that helps.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, second question around the, uh, animals. Is it specific to canines predominantly?
Mr. Chad.
Yeah, thanks, Mary. Um, yeah, it is mostly dog calls that we get. Um, there, I think one of the calls was horses, oddly enough, um, but, uh, it's, there's some, uh, feline calls as well. But because we don't have a bylaw specific to, to feline cats, it's, uh, it's almost all, all dog-related, yeah.
Go ahead. Just to comment, your worship, something that I was thinking about when we, you know, when it comes out of tax time, and people might look to say, um, you know, oh, we're spending all this money on additional resources, for example, community safety officers. I would love to see something like this graph posted online, um, very delicately, but in a way that can show, um, people within the community. This is, you know, where a lot of that time is being spent, so that rather than saying, you know, make sure you're taking care of your animals, we can actually show people what it's costing, like, as a community. So it's more of just a general comment, um, but specific to traffic too, it'd be really kinda cool to show people, you know, if you take better care of your animals, and if you, you know, make sure that you're driving carefully, um, yeah, resources, um, can be best spent, I guess, another way. It's not to say that I'm not super grateful that you're here and that you're gonna be here for a long time. Um, just more sure to show people what we're spending money on. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counsel Patterson. I think it's a good point across the organization, and I think lots of good, um, you know, result is being seen with, um, the staff that we have and the communications officer, so there's always more room. So I think having suggestions like that on how we share out, the good work is always welcome, and I think then staff capacity will determine how much of that messaging we get out as we can, but always good to share as best we can. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Chad? Already. Thanks for joining us in this meeting. And for your work. Okay. And so fifteen-three, the report for Mr. George, and for information on, um, the grant, the grant update, if there's any questions, Mr. George is here. Okay, Counsel Elliot and the Counsel Raven.
A question for Mr. George through the chair. I just had a question about the thirteen grants. Were they all successful? Um, just wondering if, I don't know if you said that in the report, or I may missed it, but where everyone, was everyone successful, and um, yeah, could you answer that for me? Thank you.
Mr. George.
Need to get back to you on that one, through the chair.
Okay, and Counsel Ray, oh, Mr. Our, Mr. Durham.
I was just gonna say, we do have a comprehensive list of grants applied for throughout the year, and so that includes grants applied for through the grant writer as well as just through staff. And so that has been updated to reflect where we're at right now, so I can send that to council, just so that, uh, you know, the status of all the grants from twenty twenty-four.
Thanks, Mr. Durham. Counsel Raven.
Uh, my question's actually the same, um, and more specifically to the ones not for the town is just something to put out there, is if we can maybe ask organizations, is if they are successful for grants, just to make sure that the town has kind of been aware of that, 'cause I think it's one of those ways where we can kinda just show that it's been working, um, yeah.
Thanks, Counsel Raven. Mr. George.
Reading your worship, Counselor Raven, um, the grants that nonprofits apply for, uh, often seek letters of support requests through council, and in those letters, uh, we include language of, um, please provide us with the status update, so we try to keep track of those. Um, we're also finding that, um, having the support provided through the Towne Smithers Grant Writer, um, helps align some of our nonprofits with the town's strategic priorities, the goals that we're, um, looking to move towards for the community. Um, and we have communication out on, um, how to request those letters of support and aligning with priorities here.
All right, that seems good. Any other questions? All right, thanks, folks. Um, we're up to the sixteen, so bylaws. First up, bylaw nineteen eighty-two and adoption of the Northwest BC Regional Funding Agreement Reserve. Motion to adopt, please, Counsel Patterson, Counsel Raven. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, and that's carried unanimously. And, uh, sixteen-two is bylaw number nineteen eighty-three. The five-year financial plan bylaw amendment, and also for adoption. Counsel Bukama, Counsel Patterson, discussion? All in favor? Opposed, and that's carried unanimously. Okay. Um, we have one item, two items, under section seventeen. Uh, counsel, we have a letter or an email from Ms. Peterson uh, regarding the arena parking lot. Doesn't really have a question or a request, but sort of a statement and a wish. So if there's anything from counsel, we can hear it. Otherwise, I think I am gonna make a comment, like, I, I don't mind this being raised, and I think we need to acknowledge if counsel, that is, if we would like to see something different in that arena parking lot, that would include an invitation to staff to bring us something. Um, you know, we might, I, I can't actually remember, Mr. Lawrence might be able to help with this currently with the arena parking lot, and I would say that, understanding it's a big parking lot, that's probably not all treated exactly the same. But if we, if you recall, generally kind of what our treatments are of that big area, that's the curling, curling rank, arena run, arena two. Do we just kinda go through there a couple times a year? Great at smooth it out, 'cause it, it does receive a ton of traffic, and whatever weather is dished up. So, Mr. Lawrence.
Thanks, Mary Atro. Uh, you summarized that quite well. So when we have the, the time, the availability, and also the weather, um, so we've been fighting all three of those things recently, and that's why it's in the condition it is, when we have some colder weather and opportunity for a little more snow and some frozen ground to get that saturation out of there, then we have, yeah, we have the ability to make that, uh, work a little bit better. Alternatively, staff could look at, um, uh, getting some budget pricing too on pavement, what that would look like. Um, there are some complexities around, uh, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and what our future uses are, street lighting, um, drainage, so there's, there's, uh, there's a lot to it. Um, at this current time, where we're, we'll still maintain the way, the way that we are to maintain the current service level.
Okay, thanks for that, uh, Mr. Lawrence. That helps. I think counsel always knows that the way to get things look different is through budget. And, um, I don't have a suggestion right now, but just I'm, I'm saying it at this table, 'cause we're getting into that season. So if there's anything that counsel would like different, I think it's an invitation to staff to put something in the budget, but uh, Counsel Ray.
Um, two things. So during the time that my kids played hockey and I was at the arena a lot, the weather's changed quite a bit. It used to be fine. It used to snow, it'd get packed down, and then hardly ever melted. You were hardly trotting through, and by the time my kids were done, you were trotting through my, and, and um, the, the corollary to that is when we built the new arena for four million dollars, it was gonna be well over a million dollars to pave the parking lot, so if you can, if you can extrapolate how much paving costs have gone up, uh, to, to nowadays, it would be a very, very pricey project.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Counsel Patterson.
No, I think your worship, so just to answer the call, I would just say that, um, staff have actually already commented on it. My, I can appreciate the concerns that were raised in the letter, but my consideration would be that I would keep that in the back of my mind for when we talk about implementation of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson. Okay. Um, I'm not seeing anything else, so I'm gonna move on. We have, um, letter seventeen-two from the Village of Nacasp. Um, regarding the B C health services and the alert-ready program. Is there a desire from counsel to act on this one? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. I'm gonna move on. And then we have correspondence for information under eighteen. If there's anything there you would like to, um, bring out, this is your moment. Counsel Patterson.
Uh, thank you, worship. Question through to staff, uh, specific to eighteen-four. This is the Ministry of Environment and Parks is pleased to announce the launch of the Clean B C Organics Funding Program. Can you remind me, are we still in our, uh, feasibility stage of our organics program?
Mr. Lawrence, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Atro. Yes, we're, we're currently fini- finishing up our feasibility study, uh, on our organics diversion program. Uh, we're expecting that to be completed next month. We have been in initial discussions, Mr. Durer, uh, Mr. Allen, myself, on how we're able to access that grant with, um, this tight timeline of finishing this feasibility study, so those, uh, those conversations are still alive right now.
Thanks, Mr. Lawrence. I'm not seeing any other, oh, Counsel Elliot.
I read this as applications are invited for indigenous governing bodies and regional districts. Not applied, does it say municipalities as well? Okay, I missed that. No, it's good.
Okay, I'm just gonna, we'll just get mics going here. So Counsel Patterson, you were commenting.
Sorry, worship, through to my fellow counselor. Yes, yes, it does.
Okay. Counsel Bukama.
Uh, I thought it would be good to, just to acknowledge the, um, exemplary, exemplary service that uh, Mr. Blackburn provided as outlined in letter eighteen-two. So.
Thanks, Counsel Bukama. I was holding that as well. I wanted to say thanks to Mr. Blackburn and his staff. Who knows, one time a flight landing at YYD might be piloted by the young Casey Uncle Hart, so, uh, thanks for your attention and kindness. Uh, one person at a time matters, and I appreciate Mr. Harris took the time to write the letter, and thanks for the time that you spent, so we, uh, probably don't get enough thank you letters here, so it's nice to be able to draw attention to them when we get them. Okay. Anything else? All right, counsel. We're going to, I'm looking to Mr. Schroeder. This is my moment to make a mistake. We're going to adjourn this meeting, but nobody gets to go home.
Uh, we would be looking to move, uh, to, to recess this meeting.
Recess this meeting, and nobody gets to go home. I think Counsel Patterson is moving, we recess. Counsel Ray seconds. All in favor? And that is carried unanimously, and we'll just take a few minutes right now, so um, I'll call you back in about eight minutes.